नंदको निकेन्नो वन्दनालु स्तोत्राल चेलिंस कुंचिना प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी प्रवेश नेसु कृष्ण स्वर गणमायन नाम उन्ना में भुड़ा तन्दी मीर माक्ष चेसन मेल नन्नीत नुड़ा नापकिन चेसको निस्ततिंच टकु आराधिंच टकु ना प्रवम आकनुग्रहिसनी गोपक कृपणबटी निकेन्नो वन्दनालु स्तोत्राल चेलिंस कुंचिना मरक्षारी स्पेशल बिडिंग्स का प्रवा इंतवरकु मेरु सहाय चेस्ट ओछनारु उदयकाल समय उन्ना प्रवम अजहान समय उन्ना तन्दी निको वाक्य उनु कोधि सेफ ध्यान चेगलुटकु मकिचन कृपणबटी निको वन्दनाल चेलिसना प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी क्वेश्चन नांस सेशन लुड़ा प्रवम ईर्मक तोड़ाइनारु ननातन्दी राजस में नेच कॉल्स ना समाधानमु प्रवम अत्थनी मारे माकु नेहर पिंच नाद कुड़ा निको वन्दनाल चेलिसना ये कसायत्र काल समय ना मरक्षारी प्रवा निका यो कामशम आकनुग्रहिसनी नाद कुनिको वन्दनाल क्राइस्ट सेंटर्ड लाइफ प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी कोधि सेपु निसे नियोकसानीलम एम गडपनायन गानी कृपणम आकदाय चेस्ट रम्यन वेड कुंचिना मरमुकिंग आप प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी आत्मीय पाटमलु ना प्रवन अत्थनी मंच बोधकरायन देवड़ा माकिंकनु मेरु बोधिस्तु रण्डी ननातन्दी में नेच कुंचिना पाटमलु ना प्रवम अरी यो कात्मिय सत्यमलु माइका फ्रेदमलो ना प्रवम मेरे लिखंपचे मनी वेड कुंचिना प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी मारी यो का विन्न वाक्य नुड़ा नीरकटी फलिपचे नी निचितमायते प्रवा यो का मीटिंग विडिची में वेलन अपुरुत तन्दी निचितमायते मामन संत अबुड़ा प्रवा ननातन्दी मारी नियोक वाक्यम तनिंडियु नगलुटकु निचितमायते प्रेम गलीन प्रवा मारी क्राइस्ट सेंटर्ड लाइफ में जीविंस गलुन अटुलुड़ा ना पौरिषन कलिकी निकोरके जीविंचे कृपणम आकनुग्रहिस्तु रम्यनी प्रथमाल वेड कुंचिना प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी मरक्षारी प्रवा म्यूजिक मिनिस्ट्री लोनु मार प्रवम अरी लाइफ ननामीर या चीस कुंचिना ब्रदर्स अंदन नुड़ा मेरु नापकिन चेस्ट कोंडी प्रेम गलीन अत्थनी इंतवरकु डचुपिंचन कृपणबटी निको वन्दनालु मरमुकिंग आनी दासु ना प्रव जयराजन नुड़ा मेरु नापकिन चेस्कुंटु रम्यनी प्रथमाल वेड कुच्छना इंतवरकु चिना कृपणबटी निको वन्दनालु प्रवा यो का मीटिंग लुड़ा तोड़े इन्नंडी ना प्रवम अरी निचितमायते प्रवनी दासुनी बलम्गा वाड़कुंडी माकुड़ा प्रवा मेरु ना प्रवा सहाय चेमनी विनगलिंग ना फ्रदयालु माकनुग्रहिसनी मामनो लेत्रमलु मेरु विपंडी प्रेम गलीन परलोक अत्थनी तरालचन नन्नीत नुड़ा माफ़ फ्रदर्ल लोंच तीस्वेंडी कॉली चेंडी निकोरके मात्रमे ना प्रवन अत्थनी में मिसमय मगडपुनाटु निकु ना प्रवा यो का ममलु पूर्तिगा ना प्रवानी कप्पुगिंस्कुंटु समस्त गणता महिमा प्रभामलु निकु मात्रमे चेलिसु प्रवेश नेसु कृष्ण स्वर गणमायन नाम उन्ना चिनी प्रार्थना नागी वेड कुंचिना मुतन्दी आमेन बिफर विसिंग दी सोंग्स एंड यू नो फ्रेस द लॉर्ड आस द यू नो ब्रदर्स विल कम एंड लीड अस इन द सोंग्स नो लेट अस ऑल टर्न ऑर बिबिल्स तू रीड दिस तू वर्सेस अगेन एंड फ्रॉम एफिशियंस चैप्टर फोर वर्स 11 एंड वर्स 12 टुगेलर लॉडली सो देट वी कैन अंडरस्टैंड यू नो द थीम द सेंट्रिक थीम वी हैव सीन सम ऑफ द यू नो थॉट्स दैट अन्ना हैस बोट टुडे इन द मॉर्निंग अगेन वी हैव गोना कंटिन्यू ऑन दोस्त थॉट्स बट बिफर डेट वी विल रीड दिस वर्सेस एफिशियंस चैप्टर फोर 11 एंड 12 अंदर कलिसी टुगेलर वी विल रीड दिस वर्सेस एंड ही गिव सम अपोजल्स एंड सम प्रोफेट्स एंड सम इवांजलिस एंड सम पास्टर्स एंड टीचर्स फॉर द परफेक्टिंग ऑफ द सैन्स फॉर द वर्क ऑफ द मिनिस्ट्री फॉर द एडिफाइंग ऑफ द बॉडी ऑफ क्राइस्ट वी रियली थैंक द लॉर्ड फॉर दिस वंडरफुल थीम दैट द लॉर्ड हैस गिवन अंत तू अस सो वी विल यू नो मेटेड सम मोर टाइम यू नो ऑन दिस पर्टिकुलर वर्सेस बिफर डेट यू नो द वर
ओह व्हाट द वंडरफुल दिस वंडरफुल दिन दी आर विल नेवर फॉरगेट आफ्टर आई वंडर इन डार्कनेस अवे जीज़ आई सेबियर आई मैन ओह वाउड अट एंड द कंपाशनल फ्रेंड ही नेट द नीड ऑफ माय हार्ट शायद दिस डॉलिंग विथ जॉन आई एम टेलिंग इन मिड ऑफ द डार्कनेस डिपॉजिट हेवेन किंग डाउन एंड ग्लोरिफुल माय सोन वेन अट द क्रॉस माय सेबियर मेड मी हो माय सिंस वो वास डॉलिंग एंड माय नाइट विस डॉन टू दिन हेवेन किंग डाउन एंड ग्लोरिफुल माय सोन वोन ऑफ द स्पिरिट विथ लाइफ ऑफ माय हार्ट इन डिवोर्स फ्रॉम ही डिवाइड जस्ट डिफाइड फुली थ्रू कैल्बरीज लॉ ओह वाउड अट एंड इन इस मान एंड द ट्रांसैक्शन सो फ्रीफी वास मेड फेमनेस इन द राइटिंग तू कॉर्ड दी ऑफ अरे अब इसी दिन प्रवकी सेन मी ओह प्रेस इस ज्याली हेवेन किंग डाउन एंड ग्लोरिफुल माय सोन वेन अट द क्रॉस माय सेबियर मेड मी हो माय सिंस वो वास डॉलिंग एंड माय नाइट विस डॉन टू दिन हेवेन किंग डाउन एंड ग्लोरिफुल माय सोन नो फॉर द होम दाई वोट शोल्ड एंड यर आफ्टर द पासिंग ऑफ डाय आई हैव अ फ्यूचर इन हेवेन फॉर शो देविंस दिस मैंचेन सो ब्लाउन एंड इट्स बिकॉज़ ऑफ दाई वंडरफुल दिन वेन अट द क्रॉस अन्यूली रिचु सी टर्नल एंड ब्लेसिंग सुपरनु फ्रॉम हिस प्रेशियस एंड ओह इसी हेवेन किंग डाउन एंड ग्लोरिफुल माय सोन वेन अट द क्रॉस माय सेबियर मेड मी हो माय सिंस वो वास डॉलिंग एंड माय नाइट विस डॉन टू दिन हेवेन किंग डाउन एंड ग्लोरिफुल माय सोन
हो डीप द फादर्स लव फॉर अस हो डीप द फादर्स लव फॉर अस हो वस बियों डोमेशन दाई चुकिंग दिस ओनली साउंड तिल्ली के ब्रशिस ब्रश हो डीप द प्लेन ऑफ सीरियम दाई फादर टर्न्स इस पीस अवे आस वोल्स विथ मोर द टूल्स एंड वाउ एक में इस साउंड्स तू ग्लोरी दी हो दामन अपॉन द ब्राउन एंड नास मासिंग दाई नाउ इन दे आफ्टर लाइक वास अपॉन ब्रिज इस डाय इगर दस रख मी लाइन आई नो व्हाट इट इस फीलिंग अंग्रेज नाइट बोसिंग एनी डी थिंग नो गेस नो बाद नो वेस्ट बट आई वो बोस्ट इस जीज़ का इस देव एंड रेसरेक्शन व्हाय शुड आई की फ्रॉम हिस रिवो आई कैन नॉट गिव एन एंड बट दिस आई नो वर्ड ऑफ माय हार्ट हिस वोल्स अप्ली माय रेंसर फ्रॉम तिलुगु सोंग्स ना हुदया मु ना हुदया मु विन्तगमारीनु ना हुदया मु विन्तगमारीनु ना हुदया मु विन्तगमारीनु नालो ईसु वचीनंदुना नालो ईसु वचीनंदुना संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम इर्वा बारीनु नामानु नित्याहु इर्वा बारीनु नामानु नित्याहु ईसु नंदुनु कीनंदुना ईसु नंदुनु कीनंदुना संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम ईसु संतोषमु निकु बाले ना ईसु संतोषमु निकु बाले ना ईसु संतोषमु निकु बाले ना निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम सक्यसमाधानु निकु बाले ना सक्यसमाधानु निकु बाले ना सक्यसमाधानु निकु बाले ना निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम तिक्याजीवाहु निकु बाले ना तिक्याजीवाहु निकु बाले ना तिक्याजीवाहु निकु बाले ना निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम दोषाबाद्याहु निकु बाले ना दोषाबाद्याहु बाले ना निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो निर्यय ईसु नंदुनु रम्यो संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम ईसु कृष्ण नु निज चुको ईसु कृष्ण नु निज चुको ईसु कृष्ण नु निज चुको नारे शिचु नियो नामु नारे शिचु नियो नामु संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम संतोषमी समाधानम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम चेप्पनासक्यमायनु संतोषम ये हो वन ना बलमा ये हो वाह ना बलमा ये दाता मायने दी नी पात अचीकु नामायना दी नी पात ये हो वाह साषा तुलु नानु शुर्तिनु नेरु कुपा शुर्तिनु नानु नाश्य नानु शुर्तिनु नेरु कुपा शुर्तिनु नेरु नाली बाती लुभो दिन सरता बादी सभी ही लुभो दिन निरुद्ध न्यून ये नामायनी बेबा निरुद्ध करनु ये नामायनी बेबा ये हो वाह ना बलमा ये दाता मायना दी नी पात अचीकु नामायना दी नी पात ये हो वाह ओलिश्यामु गल्ला गल्लु नी पात बाला गल्लु नाश्य नाजु जुआ दी केजु बालु शामु सासंगलु बाली पात बाला गल्लु लातु नाजु जुआ दी केन गल्ला गल्लु दिलाचिना गल्ला गल्लु दिलाचिना ताई चिविस ताई जाले ताई चिविस ताई जाले ये हो वाह ना बलमा ये दाता मायना दी नी पात अचीकु नामायना दी नी पात ये हो वाह नेरु गल्ला तिक्याजीवाहु शुर्तिनु ताई नाली गल्ला तिक्याजीवाहु शुर्तिनु ताई गल्ला बाय ताई गल्ला शुर्तिनु ताई नाली गल्ला तिक्याजीवाहु शुर्तिनु ताई शुलाया ताक बालु नाश्य ताई शुलाया ताक शर्वा दी नित्य सर्वातिकार शर्वा दी नित्य सर्वातिकार ये हो वाह ना बलमा ये दाता मायना दी नी पात नामायना दी नी पात ये हो वाह ये हो वाह तिक्याजीवाहु गल्ला बेबा बालु नाश्य बालु नाश्य ये हो वाह तिक्याजीवाहु गल्ला बेबा बालु नाश्य बालु नाश्य अचीकु नामायना दी नी पात ताई चिविस ताई गल्ला बेबा ताई लेलुया तिक्याजीवाहु ताई लेलुया तिक्याजीवाहु जीसे दी ना बलमा ये दाता मायना दी नी पात अचीकु नामायना दी नी पात ये हो वाह लगी कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु ये हो वच्चे सिनाहो कृपका रमुलक आयना की बिजुरुंतु ये हो वच्चे सिनाहो कृपका रमुलक आयना की बिजुरुंतु ये हो वन नामुना रघुन चिस्तनु ये हो वन नामुना रघुन चिस्तनु दशन नाप्या से बोली कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृतन्य तलपिंदु मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कर्ली गर्भामुना रुपिंपा बड़क मुनुपेनु ये रेगी कर्ली गर्भामुना रुपिंपा बड़क मुनुपेनु ये रेगी कर्ली गर्भामुन्डी बायलु पड़क मुन्डी कर्ली गर्भामुन्डी बायलु पड़क मुन्डी प्रतिष्ठित चित्री कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु दूषकुरनु नीमसकुरनु आनितारु गए अंतिरी दूषकुरनु नीमसकुरनु आनितारु गए अंतिरी दासु निदनु चिस्तिकार्तिवी दासु निदनु चिस्तिकार्तिवी दोषमुला भारी कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु इद्दीपोरते विरुवा बड़ीना दासु रामणी अंतिरी इद्दीपोरते विरुवा बड़ीना दासु रामणी अंतिरी इद्दीप पापा सामकोरते इद्दीप पापा सामकोरते सिंधीना रक्तामंतिरी कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु नीतु कृपका नागु ईसु नंदु नी गुरशिच्छिरी नीतु कृपका नागु ईसु नंदु नी गुरशिच्छिरी कागु नागु नियल वल्लना कागु नागु नियल वल्लना इद्दीपु निकरा मी कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु चेप्पनासक्यमु महिमायुत्तमु नीव संदीन संतोषमु चेप्पनासक्यमु महिमायुत्तमु नीव संदीन संतोषमु दामु कुर्दा हल्लूया दामु कुर्दा हल्लूया दामु बारी कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु कृपका निकरा मुलो मदेवा कृतन्य तलपिंदु माकु तोडुगा नीमु टीवी माकु तोडुगा नीमु टीवी चिन्ता यात्रेल माकु तोडुगा नीमु टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो मांगु विरुवा नीमा निला निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु मांगु विरुवा नीमा निला निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो माकु कुर्णा उद्धन टीवी आरणि मदेवा माकु कुर्णा उद्धन टीवी आरणि मदेवा बलमु चिरु बलकु देवा मांगु नारी में जाऊ बलमु चिरु बलकु देवा मांगु नारी में जाऊ मांगु विरुवा नीमा देवा निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु मांगु विरुवा नीमा देवा निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो शिक्षु मां ले चढ़ारी गदा 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 नी उदारी चिद्धु नामुनी नी चया नी चिद्धु यहो वच्चे सिना नामुनी नी चया नी चिद्धु मांगु विरुवा नीमा देवा निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु मांगु विरुवा नीमा देवा निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो कश्ता मुलिं लिंदो लिदुरे मा निंदु नारी मार्ग कश्ता मुलिं लिंदो लिदुरे मा निंदु नारी मार्ग माकु तोडुगा नीमुन गदा फिरी तु बया परम माकु तोडुगा नीमुन गदा फिरी तु बया परम मांगु विरुवा नीमा देवा निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु मांगु विरुवा नीमा देवा निंदु मानस तोमे बारी चिद्धु माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो माकु तोडुगा नीमुन टीवी चिन्ह यात्रलो
प्रेस लॉट प्रेस लॉट बिफोर बी हेयर डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड रफ़्ज़ेरा जन्ना बिफोर हैव तू इंट्रोड्यूस एम बिकॉज़ इट्स नॉट बिफोर नॉट इंट्रोड्यूस एम बट आई विल डेफिनेटली वेलकम अन्ना सो डेट यू नो बी में हेयर डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड एंड इन डी मॉर्निंग सेशन बी हैव डी वंडरफुल यू नो टाइम डेट बी मेटेटेड अपऑन डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड नो डी थीम वर्स इस एफिशियंस 412 क्रिस्ट सेंटर्ड लाइफ बी हैव सीन यू नो हो बी कैन लिव आज ए क्रिस्ट सेंटर्ड और लीड आज क्रिस्ट सेंटर्ड लाइफ अन्ना बॉट यू नो वन इंटरेस्टिंग थिंग एंड हैबिट्स ऑफ क्रिस्ट थ्रू हैबिट्स ऑफ क्रिस्ट देवर फोर थिंग्स डेट बॉट मेंशन डेट होवर लॉर्ड जीसस क्रिस्ट हैव यू नो लिव्ड लुक चैप्टर 2 वर्स 13 यू नो ही वेंट कंटिन्यूअसली तू डी टैबरनिकल टेंपल मार्क 10:1 ही से ही टॉट देम कंटिन्यूअली ही सर्व डी लॉर्ड लुक 4:16 ही स्टूड अप एंड रेड आज ए कस्टम सो ही रेड डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड 4:1 लुक 22:39 ही ऑलवेज प्रेड सो सो दोस आर डी फोर हैबिट्स ऑफ लॉर्ड जीसस क्रिस्ट डेट बी कैन लर्न सो डेट बी में लीड ए क्रिस्ट सेंटर्ड लाइफ टुडे अगेन यू नो आई विल हैव इट ओवर तू अन्ना बिफॉर्ड वेस्टिंग डी टाइम यू नो बट बिफोर अन्ना कम्स हियर यू नो बिल ऑल राइज अप इफ पॉसिबल एंड सिंग डी बाइबल कोरस बिफोर बी लिसन तू डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड शाल बी ऑल राइज अप एंड सिंग डी बाइबल कोरस प्लीज डी बेस्ट बुक तू रीड इस डी बाइबल डी बेस्ट बुक तू रीड इस डी बाइबल इफ यू रीड इट एवरी डे इट विल हेल्प यू ऑल डी वे ओ डी बेस्ट बुक तू रीड इस डी बाइबल पढ़ें पसरेश्ता ग्रांधाम बाइबल पढ़ें पसरेश्ता ग्रांधाम बाइबल अनदिनां पढ़ीं चीना प्रेमतो रणरुपन ओ पढ़ें पसरेश्ता ग्रांधाम बाइबल दुनिया में सबसे प्यारा पुस्तक बाइबल दुनिया में सबसे प्यारा पुस्तक बाइबल पढ़े जो उसको उसपरो सामने कतरा कोई न हो ओ दुनिया में सबसे प्यारा पुस्तक बाइबल प्लीज बी सीटेड बट आई विल वेलकम अन्ना जय राजन्ना तू कम एंड यू नो शेयर डी वर्ड ऑफ गॉड अन्ना कैन यू प्लीज कम एफिशियंस चैप्टर 4 रीडिंग ऑल टूगेदर वर्सेस 11 एंड 12 एफिशियंस चैप्टर 4 रीडिंग ऑल टूगेदर वर्सेस 11 एंड 12 मनमंदरम विश्वास विषयमुन देवन गुच नग्नान विषयमुन शाल बी प्रेय लविंग ग्रेचियस हेवेनली फादर डी गॉड ऑफ ग्रेस मस एंड कंपेशन नेवर फेलिंग नेवर चेंजिंग गॉड डी मोस्ट हाईली एक्सोल्टेड नेम ऑफ डी ब्लेसेड लॉर्ड एंड सेविंग जीसस क्रिस्ट विन्टर इन तै खोट्स विथ प्रेस एंड थैंक्सगिविंग थैंक यू लॉर्ड फॉर तै विलिंग सक्रिफाइस डेट वाज़ ऑफर्ड ओवरसाइड जोरूसलेम एंड डी कर्स्ट रोबस्ट रकेट डिसलेट मोंटेन कल कैल्वोरी वेयर आवर जीसस क्रिस्ट वाज़ लिफ्टेड अप हाई सो डेट ही इस ऑफरिंग कोल्ड ब्रिंग मेनी ऑफ अस इन तू डी सेविंग नॉलेज आफ जीसस क्रिस्ट थैंक यू लॉर्ड फॉर डी साइड वाज़ ओपन डी फोंटेन ऑफ डी ब्लड गश्ड आउट ऑफ इट सिनर्स लाइक मी वर फ्लडेड बाय डी प्रेश्यस ब्लड क्लेंज्ड बाय इट वाश्ड बाय इट सो डेट बी में बी कॉल्ड सन्स एंड डॉटस डी चिल्लन ऑफ गॉड बट फॉर डी फिक्सी डी ब्लड ऑफ जीसस क्रिस्ट व्हाट डी फ्री गिफ्ट ऑफ सेल्वेशन यू आर गिवन अंटू अस सो डेट बी में चरिश इन डी लाइफ एंड मॉल डी लाइफ बाय डी हेल्प ऑफ डी होली स्पिरिट तू बी लाइक क्रिस्ट कन्फॉर्म तू डी इमेज ऑफ जीसस क्रिस्ट सो डेट बी में रिफ्लेक्ट एंड रेडिएट डी डिवाइन अट्रिब्यूट्स विच वाज़ इंबाइब्ड विथ थैंक यू लॉर्ड फॉर डी टाइम ऑफ सिंगिंग ग्रांटेड अंटू अस थैंक यू फॉर डोस वु कोल्ड कम फ़ार एंड नियर इन स्पाइट ऑफ डी हेक्टिक स्केडियो बी प्रेय डेट दोमेस ब्लेस डी टाइम अराउंड डी स्किप्चर्स बी अलसो प्रेय डोस वु हैव जॉइंट ऑनलाइन एंड सेव्ड में बी सेव्ड क्वेश्चंस में बी आंसर्ड सिक में बी हिल वीक में बी स्ट्रेंथेंड बेरियुड में बी कंफर्टेड एंड दोमेस टेक केयर डी पीपल्स नीड इस डी कैन नॉट अनफोल्ड लॉर्ड दो टेबल तू डू एक्सीडिंगली मोर डेन व्हाट बी आस्क एंड थिंक बी अलसो प्रेय डोस वर इन स्पेशल नीड डी सुदाकर एंड इस फैमिली वाज़ रिसाइरिंग एंड डालस टेक्सस आज ही लॉस्ट इस फादर बी प्रेय डेट दोमेस कंफर्ट ही एंड इस फैमिली मेंबर्स वर डेट वन डे दे आर गोइंग तू बी विथ यू एंड सी एयर सीज्ड डी पीपल इन डी हेवेनली ग्लोरी तू आज दिस एंड डोस वर सिक हॉस्पिटलाइज्ड में बी प्रेय डेट दोमेस सेन फॉर तै पॉवर ऑफ हीलिंग एंड आई विल कंप्लीटली हिल फ्रॉम डी सिकनेस आज अनवर्दी आज आई एम तू स्टैंड बिफोर तै पीपल आई डोनॉट मेरिट तू मिनिस्टर अंटू देम आज आई एम इंबाइब्ड विथ फ्लॉस फॉल्स फैलियूस वाश मी तरोली बाय डी प्रेश्यस ब्लड लेट माय लिप्स में बी सकम्साइज्ड हार्ट में बी टच्ड बाय डी टॉंग्स अदर कोल डेट इस टेकन फ्रॉम डी अल्ट लॉर्ड हाउ मोर्सी अपऑन अस स्पीक तू अस कंटिन्यूअली थैंक यू फॉर डी टाइम ऑफ फेलोशिप ग्रांटेड अंटू अस राइट फ्रॉम डी मॉर्निंग तू डी इस इवन नाइट समहाव लेट डी ब्लेस तू डी रिस्पेक्टिव डेस्टिनेशन स्वर्ग तू डी रिस्पांसिबिलिटी एंड बट दो हास ग्रांटेड मी ग्रेस तू स्टैंड बिफोर तै पीपल आई स्टैंड एंड डी प्रॉमिसेस ऑफ थी विच आर एक्सीडिंग ग्रेट एंड प्रेश्यस अलसो क्लेम डी प्रेयर सपोर्ट ऑफ तै पीपल लॉर्ड रिमेम्बर अस ब्लेस डी टाइम नन ऑफ अस में गो आउट आज वु की मैन बी में बी टच्ड एंड मिनिस्टर्ड बाय थी लेट डी मोमेंट ऑफ डी होली स्पिरिट रेस्ट अपऑन अस टेक कंट्रोल एंड गवर्न अस नैविगेट अस फुली सो डेट बी में ऑल बी राविश्ड बाय डी होली स्पिरिट तू दिस एंड डी एमिनिस्ट्रेशन ऑफ तै वर्ड में बी एक्सग्यूट डीकॉरिंग तू डी प्लान एंड डी पर्पस बी हास कॉल डी थिंग्स इन डी हाईली एक्सोल्टेड नेम ओ लॉर्ड एंड सेविंग जीसस क्रिस्ट अमन डी एफिशियंस इस वन ऑफ डी एक्सपेंशियल एपेसल डेट वाल आउट ऑफ डी पेन ऑफ पॉल अपॉसल बाइबल स्कॉलर्स बिलीव डेट इट इस डी थर्ड इवन ऑफ इस राइटिंग्स इट हैव इट्स ओन मैजिस्टी एंड पॉवर एंड अनफोल्डिंग डी प्लान एंड डी पर्पस ऑफ वन सर्चेबल रिचेस ऑफ इस ग्रेस एंड डी ग्लोरी आज बी यूज्ड तू कंसीडर डेट डी एपेसल इस कंसीडर तू बी यूनिक अट लिस्ट फॉर फाइव रीजंस इस डी नंबर वन डिस इस डेकोरेटेड विथ कपल ऑफ लॉन्गेस्ट एंड डीप प्रेयर्स सो मेनी टाइम्स बी प्रेय बट दे आर आशालो आज डी ग्रेस एंड मीडियोस यू ऑल नो डेट देवर आर सो मेनी कैनियन्स एंड क्रूस अक्रास डी वर्ल्ड एंड स्पेशली वेस्ट वाल ऑफ ऑल डी कैनियन्स ग्रैनी कैनियन ऑफ कैलोरोडो इस कंसीडर तू बी डी डीपेस्ट वन डेट इट हैव डेप्ट ऑफ अबाउट वन माइल एंड विट ऑफ मोर डेन 10 माइल्स एंड डी लेंग्थ ऑफ अबाउट 300 माइल्स सो मैजिस्टिक मैग्नानिमस मैस्सिव गोसबम्पिंग एंड बैक इन इंडिया देवर इस इक्वली कंसीडर्ड और रिसप्रोकेटेड डी ग्रैन कैनियन ऑफ इंडिया वेयर इन डी रिवर पेन्ना कट्स अक्रास डी सेलेमेंटरी फॉर्मेशन इस डी स्पेक्टैकुलर लुक यार कड़पा इट्स कॉल्ड गंडीकोटा सो इन एवरी एरियास यू वेस्ट स्पेशल डिसाइन सो देवर में बी कैनियन्स एंड माइंडब्लोइंग क्रिएशंस डेट डी लॉर्ड हैव मैनिफेस्टेड अन डी सर्ट सिविलरली ऑफ ऑल डी सोल्ड रिच एफिशियंस गिव्स डी टॉलर रुख हायर अल्टिट्यूड डीपर अंडरस्टैंडिंग ऑफ डी स्किप्चर्स आज इसे डिस आज ए कपल ऑफ डी प्रेयर्स नंबर वन एफिशियंस चैप्टर वन बी से हो मैग्नानिमसली प्रेस आई डोनॉट थिंक मेनी ऑफ अस वुड तो जॉइंट इन डी प्रेयर आज पॉल डिट चैप्टर वन वर्स 17:2 वर्स 20:21 डिस इस कंसीडर तू बी डी पेडल एंड चेविल ऑफ डी प्रेयर्स नंबर तू एफिशियंस चैप्टर थ्री वर्स 14 डाउन तू 21 इट्स नौ वन तू ही डेट्स एबल तू कीप अस फ्रॉम फॉलिंग एंड प्रेजेंट आज ए स्पॉटलेस बिफोर ही एंड अलसो बी ऑल नो डेट गॉड इस एबल तू डू एक्सीडिंग ग्रेट इट्स मोर डेन व्हाट बी आस्क एंड थिंक सो डिस आर कपल ऑफ डी प्रेयर्स डेट आर एक्सक्लूसिवली डी पेटेंट आर डी एपेसल ऑफ पॉल लाइन गाइल लेस तू डी एफिशियंस इस डी नंबर थ्री इट It starts with the body of Christ and ends with the bride of Christ. These are two parabolically opposite. Body is a basic component. There is a bride. It is celestial, exceptional component. So starts with a simple beginning, ends with a glorious climax. So the highest joy of a woman is to be considered as a bride. The church's glorious purpose is that it should be presented as a chaste virgin, espoused to the only one man, as Paul says in two Corinthians, chapter eleven. So church has such a privilege on this world, especially in this earth as the church is laid to prepare for the Lord's glorious coming. This dispensation helps this church as a body to be constructed to form to the very image of his son. But as it becomes a progressive body converted into a bride, can anybody do this? Only God can do this. That is the future of this glorious church. And that's mentioned in a very simple mysterious form. And fourthly, there are at least five heavenly things mentioned in this simple and small epistle. He blessed us with all spiritual blessings in heavenly places, enabled us to be seated in heavenlies, which means it takes a simple believer before he was born again, succumb to a sepulchre. His rose to the limitless heights and altitude, seated in heavenlies for free. It's a magnanimous transport. This how Paul talks about the glorious privilege the church is bestowed with because of the sacrifice Jesus did on the cross. And fifthly and finally, he talks about the love of Christ. I think if I am right, every chapter almost is loaded with the word called love. And this is considered to be the pearl of love apostle. We all know that there is also a love chapter in one Corinthians, chapter thirteen. But that's altogether different as holy rites. But in this whole epistle, the word love or the love of Christ is glaring here and there in order to catch our glimpses. So as to be grabbed and ravished by the love of the cross to conform to the very image of his dear son, living a Christ-centered life. This is not optional. This is ordinance. This is not a choice. This is commandment. Living a Christian life pleasing unto the Lord can never be considered as a choice, as an option. It's mandatory. So many times we take this holy rites as granted and we consider them as a choice. No, it's a commandment of the Lord that we all should be transformed into the very image of his dear son. So having considered these five reasons as to why the book of Ephesians or the basil of Ephesians is unique. It is further necessary for us to have a gleaning from the divine heavenly attributes of Jesus Christ. To begin with, we have initiated to clean the foundation of living a Christ-centered life in the morning session. How Jesus unraveled the habits for all of us to cultivate so that we may begin our journey to center ourselves toward a person called Jesus Christ. This evening, I would like to call upon your august attention on the second divine attribute of Jesus Christ. You all know that there are manifold, infinite divine attributes of Jesus Christ. They can be numbered, can be catalogued, can be spoken owing to the positive time and human finite standards. However, it's mandatory for all of us to consider the divine attributes of Jesus Christ so that we may initiate our launch and attempt to be formed to the very image of his son. So this evening, I'd like to talk about holiness of Christ. We all know that this Ephesians is a Christ-centered epistle. I told you in the morning that in Christ is a simple uh standard word mentioned at least thirty five times in this epistle. So in Christ, in Christ, in Christ, in Christ. In other words, to say, there is no life for a person who is outside Christ. There is heavenlies for a person who is in Christ. We need to make a decision today. Are we outside Christ or inside Christ? You may think that I am inside Christ, but your heart is so far from him. You haven't cherished the feces of the blood of Jesus Christ, never accepted. Jesus Christ is a savior in your life. Although you have a Christian name, you may have the habits of reading the word of God and coming to the sanctuary of God regularly, talking lot about Jesus Christ. But that doesn't take you to the heaven. That is not going to be a pass or a visa for the heaven. For any single person has to enter into the kingdom of God is the plan and the purpose of God. This all based upon the finished work of Jesus Christ. If any one of us have not received Jesus Christ and is offering on the cross, we have no part with the heavenlies and we can never be considered as in Christ people. We all know that we're born to live. None of us would ever wish to die early. Must increase our lifespan to the extent possible. This is one of the reasons as to why the medical facilities have encroached into the human system. So many times we are proud of this medical system saying that, oh brother, my city is fully decorated with sophisticated hospitals. You should have been proud of that. You should feel shame for that. Because because of our sin, hospitals are increasing. It's because of our sickness. So much of medical care is happening. But we are so proud of the things which we need to take shame. But we praise God in the heaven. We are not going to be sick, neither we need pharmacy or a health care. What a grace the Lord has granted. So having seen this, every one of us are born to live. But there is only one person in the whole history, in the human history, who was born to die. That is Jesus Christ. He willingly spoke of his death. He willingly prepared for his death. He willingly tasted the death. The Bible says he tasted the death for everyone who will do this. We may taste so many things. None of us has ever tasted death. We don't know how it tastes. But only Jesus knows the taste of the death. We praise God, he has swallowed the death. As buried, rose again, seated in celestial places. On the right side, uh right side of the most high, making constant intercession and supplication for the unsaved and saved too. If you were not born again, you have no part with the riches of Christ. If you haven't accepted, Jesus Christ is a personal savior. The Bible says you can never enter into the kingdom of God. John, chapter three, verse three says, he must be born again. So believe on the Lord Jesus Christ. Thou shall be saved and the household. This is the first step. A Christian living starts at the foot of the cross. Cross gives two options for us. In other words, to say, there are two things we need to do at the cross. Number one, we come to the cross for the salvation. Number two, so many times we came to the cross and stopped right over there. Happy with the salvation we received. No matter whether we are happy or not, we praise God. That's a great salvation, eternal salvation. That's good. But sitting and standing, moving around, the cross of Jesus Christ is not end of a Christian life. So many times we say that we are so happy because I know what cross is, I tasted what crosses, I really cherish the power of the cross in my day to the life because I have believed Jesus Christ is a personal savior. That's good, right? But the life of a Christian just initiated at the cross, hasn't finished. Then what to do? The second thing we need to do is, it's not coming to the cross. Jesus said, take my cross upon you and follow me on daily basis, not weekly. Or monthly or once in a year. It's very clear. We come to the cross for the salvation. We have to take up the cross for the sanctification or the service or the preparation. Many of us are satisfied with the first step and haven't initiated the second step of taking up the cross. If I haven't done that, the purpose of God is not fulfilled fully in my life. Jesus said, for his disciples and the people wants to be called his disciples. Take up my cross and follow me. So to begin with, the holiness of Christ flows from the cross. Where there is no cross, there is no holiness. We all know that holiness is a rare virtue. Rarely preached topic, rarely practiced Christian attribute. And so many times it's not that easy for us to listen to holiness of Christ. And if we listen, it's something a rare nectar dropping into our ears. But there's a divine attribute to paint the time and again in the holy rites. I would like to draw your attention on five important aspects, the holiness of God. Number one, numbers. Chapter twenty verse twelve. Number chapter twenty verse twelve. Somebody can read. Could you permit me to read in Telugu? Because most of my sentiments and messages are based upon Telugu language. Yes, sister. So na parishuddha tanu sanmaaninsunatlu. What way the holiness of God is related to this particular context? In English, it says, thou has not sanctified my name. In Telugu, it says, parishuddha tanu, holiness. So we know that uh context, a number chapter twenty in the beginning verses, people of Israel are in need of water. That's in the wilderness. And God said to Moses, go and speak to the rock. Then that will give water. But we all know that instead of speaking to the rock, Moses strikes the rock a couple of times. That's what is mentioned here. So what way this is related to the holiness? We think that it's absolutely relevant, but the Bible says it's morally closely related to that. Which means showing to the commandment, uh showing submission to the commandment is giving holiness to the Lord. Parishuddha tanu sanmaaninsta. Sanmaanam is a big word, which means honoring the holiness of God. What is the holiness of God? Moses has to submit himself to the word of God. The word of God is holy. And nothing is holier than the word of God. He hasn't believed that. Other way, uh in other words to say, he did the other way around. This is a basic problem with us too. So many times we do not like submission. Submission is a one bitter pill for believers nowadays, especially upcoming generation. But the Bible clearly and categorically says, submission is a divine virtue. Where Jesus executed this, the Bible says he was submitted to his parents. They are a simple parents. And Jesus was obedient even unto the death. The Bible says that way. See, if only Jesus was obedient to the Father, to that extent and even extent of death, how much more we. But this virtue is very rare in us. Everybody wants to be independent and individual. Submission is a rare virtue where rarely we can find. But if only we submit to the word of God, to the core and to the divine leadership and authority, the blessing flows out of the rock. And the Bible says in one Corinthians, and that rock is Christ. The rock of ages that cleft for us. So the rock is there to quench the thirst of the millions of the people. One simple obedience will meet gather the need of the people. And we don't like to do this. One simple disobedience brings plague, death among the congregation. That's what we see in Genesis, chapter three. They were rebellious to the word of God. So the only one commandment the Lord gave to them, do not touch this fruit and eat this fruit as it is forbidden. If there is only one question, do you attempt to write or do you attempt to skip it? Easily write. Because there is no option for you. Once I were preaching like this in a particular area, then some brother said, brother, if I go to heaven, the first person I would like to meet is Adam. Then asked him, hi. Just want to tell him, brother, what made you, what propelled you to do this? We all know that he was bestowed with anything any human being can ever think of. And after him, no human being has ever cherished the wealth, the excellency of the creation created by God, other than Adam. We all know that Adam is highly gifted person. He named the animals and it was so. There was not even a single reputation in naming, not even a mismatch. So many times if somebody names us, right? There will be a lot of mismatch. If somebody says Abraham, per vettad, nee ket vettad, raay, od vettad, nee kabrahmane, asal visvasmali, then what a mismatch it is. So like that, there is a lot of mismatch. Oh, this is a very big mismatch. Can anybody say that if the lion is called a lion, is a mismatch brother, it should have been called a dog? If there is a dog, dog is a dog, brother, it's a mismatch, you should have called it a dog, but a giraffe. And if you see the giraffe, do you think that it's a mismatch, it should be some named by something else other than this? You know that there are thirty percent of the animals living on this earth. The list is huge. It can be catalogued, even scientists fail to do that. But this primary scientist has called all the animals and named them without reputation. This is humanly impossible. The very fundamental law of a human being is a reputation, which we call it as a duplication, which we call it as a copying, right? If we have a self-test, say for example, in five minutes without stop, give all the uh vegetables, you surely get into memory. Can anybody speak for in five minutes, all the vegetables are whatever the vegetables you can ever think of without repeating? If you say the tomato means again, you should not repeat in five minutes that tomato again. If you say onions means you should not repeat. We can do that, even flowers, even human beings. Brother, if I tell that brother, just tell some names you know about the believers or believer names for five minutes without repetition. Can we do that? No, it's not possible. There's, there is a lot of articulation for the duplication in us. But Adam was not like that. He was stunningly unique. There was not even a single mismatch to all the animals he has named. And he was the first person who was living in a farmhouse. Open garden. If only we live in this big villa, we say that, oh see, this is mine. But he was the only one person living on the earth in a big garden, not planted by a human being. But the Bible says it's God who has created it. And he is the first romantic poet. If you were there today, you would definitely have been awarded Nobel Prize for this literature. So you can never think of the attributes of Adam are something different. His wisdom, his understanding, his ideas, everything different. Having all these luxuries, you can never think of, the list is limitless. Can anybody disobey for a single simple commandment? How it's, there is no excuse for him to do that. If he is poor, he can steal something else. We can say that he was poor, so he has stolen something else. If he's weak, if he has taken something else, we can think. He has everything at his foot. And today, as we exhibit the enmity with the animals, that was not present in the Adam's period. Everything was very friendly with him. Even lion used to come to him and serpent too and scorpion too, name it any danger. and scorpion too, name it any dangerous animal today we can ever think of. It was right with him in a friendly manner. Having all these facilities and the luxury can never think of, but he hasn't obeyed a single commandment. This, this not only reflects the nature of Adam, it reflects you and me too. So many times we have everything we can ever think of freely given by God. But in a simple thing and a single thing, we rebel against God, we revolt against God, we disobey against God. It do not reflect submission to God. That actually caused a total fall. That what's happened to Adam. And praise God the second Adam, the New Testament Adam, Jesus Christ, has restored what we have all lost. He was obedient even unto the death. And he sacrificed himself on the cross, shed his precious blood. Today what we are is just because of the efficacy of precious blood of Jesus Christ. God gave Adam one commandment, he failed. Then in Exodus he gave ten commandments. Do you think that a person who failed in one commandment, keeping one commandment would be successful in keeping ten commandments? Yes or no? No. So then why should God give ten instead of one? Thinking that at least they will fulfill a certain commandments if not all. But as he has failed in keeping one commandment, he failed in keeping all the ten commandments. That was a colossal fall. This is the nature of a human heart. But Jesus Christ was obedient in all the commandments of the Father, took our rebellion and mutiny, disobedience on the cross and granted us submission. That's the reason as to why. We need to show submission to the Jesus Christ. Jesus not only spoke things on the sermon, but he showcased divine attributes. We speak so many things about the virtues of God, so little we showcase. We're good speakers, bad practitioners. As for me, it's true, I don't know about you, but I make a generalized statement. But Jesus was not like that. So instead of blessing flowing out of the rock, we caused people to suffer the loss of Moses. They haven't suffered the loss of water, but they suffered the loss of a faithful humble servant. Number two. One Samuel chapter six, verse twenty. One Samuel chapter six, verse twenty. So can somebody read? And align the word called holiness or holy attribute of God, who shall stand before the holy God. We all know the story of ark mentioned in chapter four, five and six. Do you think that in order to talk about the Ark of God, the three chapters are to be allocated? The Holy Spirit has allocated three chapters in order to talk about the presence of God, which is the Ark of God. There should be a lot of meaning for all of us to take into the hearts. We are familiar. The people of Israel wanted help of God but not the holiness of God. This is a temptation for a very believer. I think I am using right words. This is a temptation for a very believer. He wants to have the help of God but not holiness of God. The car, the Ark of uh God was caught by Gentiles. The simple reason is that people of Israel went against the enemies to fight. And they were defeated initially. And somebody might have suggested, we were just defeated because we haven't took the Ark of God with us. So let us take the Ark of God, definitely we are going to succeed in the battle. And that was a, eh, very interesting session for others too, they did that. They wanted the help but not the holiness of God. Instead the help has turned to be what is known as a curse. The Ark of God was caught and it was there and there was death that took place in the form of Yeli and sons too. And the Bible says, ekaboh glory departed. We want the presence of God occasionally, not on daily basis. When there is a battle, we need the presence. When there is blessing, we deny the presence of God. That's a very unkind attitude we harbor in our lives. But we praise God, he is excellent in holiness, Exodus chapter fifteen says, he is excellent in holiness. God's holiness can never be described to the fullest supreme. It is ultimate, higher than altitudes, lower than the bottomless depths, broader than the borderlessness and greater than human expectations. That's the reason as to why. We come across God's holiness manifested in a special way. By the way, what's holiness is all about? He is just not watching movies, he is just not doing bad things. He is just refraining from doing wickedness. It may be part of the holiness but not the holiness at all. Holiness is, or sanctification is separated to Christ, to live like a Christ. So many times we define the holiness based upon the works and deeds, no. It's based upon a person. Of all the sixty-six books, which book is loaded with holiness? I don't know what to say. Holiness is mentioned in many times in a particular book, what is that? Isaiah, thank you incorrect. Absolutely true. More than seventy times, we come across in the book of Leviticus, there is a word called holiness, holiness, holy, 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 holy. Right? Why so many times the word holy is written only in Leviticus? The sec- the second reason is very simple. Now you guess and tell me, in which book of all the sixty-six books, the word blood is mentioned many times? Answer is very simple. Yes, you are right. Clue is given, you call that crash the clue. Book of Leviticus is loaded with a word called blood for about seventy times. Which says that where there is a blood, there is a holiness. It may not be the blood of Jesus Christ, but analogy of the blood of Jesus Christ, replica of the blood of Jesus Christ. The blood of the animals were shed. And the word blood, blood is written time and again, time and again, time and again. Now coming back to the third word, which is the third word mentioned in the book of Leviticus more predominantly. Now I am asking word, not book. Huh? Sacrifice, okay, thank you. Offering, thank you. The word fire. So holiness, blood, fire. See if there is fire, then we can come to the blood of Jesus Christ. If there is a blood of Jesus Christ, there is a holiness. So these are all linked, so many times we think that holiness is just refraining doing bad, that's good. That's initial stage, key standard. But the higher we grow, on the ladder of spirituality, we will discover to our amazement that holiness is just not that, refraining doing bad, but it is rejoicing being like Christ by the precious blood of Jesus Christ. The more I am holy, automatically all these things will be remote. So many times we say that, is it good to see that? Is it good to watch this? Is it good to go there? Holiness never questions that way, because Jesus Christ is holy. He hasn't had any questions like that. Whatever he does has no sin, the Bible says he has no sin. So when we talk about the presence of God, which is the Ark of God, it is the holiness that demands our total submission so that we may cherish the success in our battles. Today none of us are free from the lies battles. Sometimes they are on daily basis. Sometimes it, it may not be possible for us to fight as we become so weak, fragile. But in one Samuel chapter seventeen, if I am right, David says the battle belongeth unto the Lord. Christian life is not a burial ground but a battlefield. That's what we see in Ephesians chapter six. Why should a soldier needs or why should a soldier be prepared in order to fight the battle? If there is no battle, soldiers are no required. They are not needed anyway. They are needed because there is a battle. But every Christian is considered to be a soldier because there is a battle to be done. We praise God, the battle was won by Jesus Christ on the cross, but we need to execute, claim the victory, Jesus has a lot because of his finished work on the cross. Towards this end, we need to keep on moving, battling with the carnality, battling with the worldliness, battling with ungodliness, battling with all the temptations that always propel us to be away from the person of Jesus Christ. So thirdly. Exodus chapter twenty-eight, verse thirty-six. Exodus chapter twenty-eight, verse thirty-six. You have to engrave. Holiness belongeth unto the Lord. Salvation belongeth unto the Lord. Victory belongeth unto the Lord. All divine virtues are imbibed in Christ because he is divine person. So this talks about the turban and the caption to be engraved on the turban, not on the rear side but on the front, that says that every minister who is shouldered, received the mantle of responsibility, has to be decked with a divine attribute called holiness. Without that attribute, if our turban is really decked with all other attributes, ministry will be just ignored, may not be considered. So God uses the clean vessel. He cannot use the filthy vessel, lest we do right. There's some gloss we want to use, if it is filthy, corrupted, contaminated, dirty, we usually keep it aside. If it's clean, pure, then uncontaminated, we tend to use it. So God wants to do the same thing. So many times we know that there are so many people who are really blessed with gifts of singing, speaking, talking, praying and so many things, but we don't see that spare of the ministry extended, I don't know why. Maybe this is one of the reasons, I do not see that uh. This is the only reason, but this could be one of the reasons. Because the holiness of God is not guarded. The Bible says without holiness, it is impossible to see God. A person who cannot see God in the heart cannot saw God. Before I need to saw God, I need to see him. That's true. When we focus our attention to the book of Revelation, chapter one, John says, I saw him. Then he writes all the uh texts of the holy writ in chapter two, three, then heavenly things from chapter four through chapter twenty-two. If I do not see him, I cannot write. You all know that three of the disciples who were taken to the mount of transfiguration, Matthew chapter seventeen. Only three were there present on the mountain top, what happened to the rest of the disciples? Where were they? Were they not interested to see the Jesus Christ in that glorious form? Yes or no? Perhaps they thought that let's enjoy the absence of Jesus Christ rather than the presence of Jesus Christ. This is our attitude, we are propelled to harbor this attitude. Otherwise they can also make a petition to Jesus Christ that they would like to follow him to the mount of transfiguration. Nine were left at the foot of the mountain, only three were there on the mountain top. Misery were at the foot, minority were on the top. This is exactly the picture of the church today. Minorities on the mountain top, majority at the foothills. They were least bothered about what happens on the mountain top, so sad and shameful. And you know that they have missed this privilege of seeing glorious Christ throughout their life on the earth. Only these three disciples, Peter, John and James, had the opportunity of seeing Christ in all the glory in the mo- in the transfiguration. Because they have seen him in such a glory, they could pen the revelation of God for the benefit of the church. They could sow the lot to the extent of laying down their lives for the Christ. So why many believer's service is not acknowledged, reaching, not reaching over the people? Perhaps they are not willing to see Christ, but they want to sow. This is a temptation for a Christian worker. He wants to serve without seeing, that's impossible. We all know that John, uh, Isaiah chapter six. Isaiah sees Jesus Christ seated in heaven, uh, on the throne, and God seated on the throne. Because he saw him, he heard the voice, who shall go for me? And there is a gentle, sweet, small spiritual reply coming out of him, here I am, send me. These are the clauses, that's the reason as to why God calls us to sow him. Of all the three and a few he ministered unto his disciples and the people that were there in that dispensation. He taught so many things to all the people and the disciples as well. But one of the hardcore truth he told and narrated to the disciples is this, do you know what is that? I think I have made my point very clear. Of all the three years plus he ministered to disciples, he wants them to know that there is a fundamental thing they need to acknowledge in their life. And this is the truth he has taught unto them. It's very simple to speak, read, but to follow his stuff. And that truth, he, John chapter fifteen, verse five, without me, he can do nothing. This is the narration of all the ministry he has done to these disciples. You think that you can do anything without me? You think that you can cast out the devils without me? You think that you can walk on the sea without me? You think that you can do anything in this world? But Jesus wants to highlight that without me can do nothing. This is the same truth, but not even today as well. So many times we, Christian workers of the church thinks that you can do anything without Christ. Because I have all the facilities I can ever think of, all the resources I can ever think of, all the opportunities I can ever think of. But if we are blessed with all these things, fine, praise God. But is that ministry is navigated by the Holy Spirit is the question to be addressed. If that is not there, the ministry can never be recorded in the annals of Jesus Christ. See, if only this lesson is so true, in the case of disciples, how much more it is in our lives too. See, every time we come to Jesus Christ, we have to acknowledge that without the Lord, we can do nothing. No matter you live in the developed country or underdeveloped country or developing country. Development doesn't makes any difference in serving the Lord. Sometimes it may throw lot of opportunities, sometimes it may restrain some opportunities and resources. But it is only one person that helps us to show him to that most supreme unsatisfaction, that is Jesus Christ. And next one, Isaiah chapter six, verse three. We have started to see the holiness of Christ manifested in the Holy Rite. As holiness is one of the attributes of Jesus Christ, we are focusing our attention on gleaning the Christlikeness, yes, this is the need of the day. So firstly, we have seen the holiness of Jesus Christ can be unleashed by submission. Secondly, the holiness of Jesus Christ can be seen by supplication. Thirdly, holiness of Jesus Christ can be seen in the service. And fourthly, Isaiah chapter six, verse three. Chalak. You know how many times this triple light of his holiness is mentioned in the Holy Rite? Hmm, really? In the Old Testament, only once, that is in book of Isaiah chapter three. In the New Testament, Revelation chapter four, verse eight, if I am right. So none of the attributes of God are mentioned as a triple light other than this attribute called holiness. It doesn't say that lol, lol, lol. It doesn't say that righteousness, righteousness rises. Doesn't say that long suffering, long suffering, long suffering. It doesn't say that light, 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 light. It says holiness, holy, holy, holy. I am not talking about why only thrice this word is mentioned in this particular case or what does it mean and other vital issues, but just want to glean the chapter six of Isaiah is considered to be outer court and altar before we enter into the holiest, holies. Sanctum of sanctorium. If there is no altar, there is no cleansing. If I do not see the holiness of God right there in the house of the Lord, it can be the house of anybody else. You got my point, I think? The fundamental difference between the house of God and the house of human being is this. The house of God is decorated with what is known as a holiness. The Bible says in Psalms, "Holiness belongeth unto the Lord." Holiness belongeth unto the sanctuary. That's the reason as to why we are invited in Psalms saying that worship the Lord in the beauty of his holiness. No other beauty is manifested in the worship. But so sad, that attribute is ignored in the worship. Other attributes are just highlighted in the worship, which have to be removed. That's the reason perhaps our worship is not really accepted and Christ is not enthroned upon that worship. We see here Isaiah was preparing himself for the greater ministry ahead of him. He sees the holiness in the sanctuary. When we go to the house of the Lord, the primary purpose of a believer is to behold the holiness of God. If that hasn't happened, our going to the house of the Lord is just a formality, the casuality. So many times we go to the house of the Lord for obvious reasons. One of the reasons is to see who is playing, who is singing, who is speaking, who is helping this ministry, that ministry. In order to comment upon the singing is not good, speaking is not good, sermon is not good, the closings are not good, the benediction is not good, oh brother, all things are not good. It's true, all human activities may not be good. But the attribute of divine God prevail in the house of the Lord is far beyond our imagination, the holiness. If I do not see the holiness of God in the house of the Lord at the expense of all these things, my coming to the house of the God is futile effort. So whenever I go to the house of the Lord, this is what I need to glance, the holiness of God. You know Isaiah had a lot of problems. In chapter six, we see that he sees the God enthroned on high and lofty place. You know, Isaiah records at least five types of thrones. You may ask me, brother, you were talking something and you were going to some other place. Yes, I am going, coming to the right place. The house of the Lord is a throne place for God. How can you imagine in chapter six, which is the house of the Lord, he will have a throne? That's what is written there, see Isaiah chapter six, verse one. Sitting upon the throne, where was it? It was not in the palace, it was not in the kingdom. The Bible clearly says, in verse one, last part, brother. Temple, where is this throne? In the temple, which means temple and a throne are closely, indispensable, integrated, coupled, interwoven with one another. We miss all these things so many times. We think that temple is just a place where saved people can just gather and worship the Lord in truth and spirit and then do some socialing and then go back. That may be true in present dispensation, but that was not biblical anyway. If I do not see the throne, if I do not see the holiness in the temple, it can never be a temple. We all know that Isaiah comes from a royal background. The royal blood flows in his, in him. We think that prophet is usually coming from Leviticus tribe. That may be true in some cases, but he was not. He comes from a tribe of Judah. He has the east privilege of serving under the regime of four kings. Serving in the dispensation of the kings is not easy job, was tough. But he has seen not the four kings, but the fifth king, who is king of kings and the lord of lords. So many times our eyes are focused on the only kings of this world, we rarely look beyond them. And Isaiah was not like that, he looked beyond. That's the reason as to why we see that here in this place, we see the seraphims. This is the only mention of seraphims as far as my familiarity with the Holy Rite goes, nowhere in the Holy Rite. We all know that angels are mentioned here and there, and these seraphims are such heavenly bodies, serving in the temple of the Lord. If I want to be served by the seraphims, I need to see the throne, the temple, the tongues, altis. See, if this happens, then a person like Isaiah goes out and proclaims the power of Christ like, Isaiah chapter fifty-three, the spectacular prophecy of the death of Jesus Christ. Then there will be attraction of the sinners to the cross. What a failure it is for the present days church. We are unable to see this picture as Isaiah has seen for about two thousand six hundred years ago. If only prophet could see such a magnanimous, magnificent, marvelous picture of Christ or a God in the temple for about two thousand six hundred years back or three thousand years back, how much more today we need to see such a beauty of the person of Jesus Christ. So sad that our eyes are blinded to this vision. Instead of having the vision of Jesus Christ, we want so many visions, brother, I got a vision. In that vision, there is a devil, there is a snake, there is a lion, all fighting, brother, they are coming to subdue me. So all unnecessary visions and dreams we get, but very rarely we get this. And I usually go to the bed, I used to pray, Lord, if at all you want to give some dream. I don't like any other dream, but the dreams that are there in the scriptures has to be given. So sad that I haven't got any one until now. But I got so many bad dreams. How good if only I get the dream like Isaiah had. It's not a dream, it's reality, but if it comes that way, like the dream and Jacob got on his way to his uncle's house. What a privilege it is for all of us to cherish, it's such a sublime spiritual things, we miss them all. Holiness of Christ is entangled with all these things. I cannot just remove this fabric out of the total classic fabric of divinity of the person Jesus Christ, it's interwoven. Fifth and final, I will just read it and close. Acts of the Gospel, chapter five. Acts of the Puzzles, chapter five. Let me read it both in Telugu and English, verse three. Chapter five, Acts of the Puzzle, chapter five, verse three. Yes, somebody can read in English. Cheating, deceiving the Holy Spirit. We all know that the God's holiness in this present generation is manifested in the Holy Spirit. This is the first incident in the Holy Rite in relation to the church history that people grabbed courage to deceive the Holy Spirit. So strange, I usually understruck knowing that why should the Holy Spirit has taken liberty to write the names of this couple who set a bad example for us. None of us would go into our, claim their names for our kids. But so many times there are good people who have done great works in the Bible, or their names were not mentioned. Perhaps God wanted to know the severity of deceiving the Holy Spirit leads to death, no matter who they are. So this is the first incident I said, where death rocked in the beginning of the church history. So many people today spiritually dead, do you know why? They deceive the Holy Spirit, we do not honor the Holy Spirit. He's an indwelling person and we miss him. And we like to miss him intentionally in our Christian walk on daily basis. I say this Christian walk, daily basis, missing the Holy Spirit is no work at all. But we claim that we are walking on daily basis based upon the Holy Rite, missing the Holy Spirit. It's not possible. So living a Christ-centered life involves the holiness of Christ. We have seen five things from the Holy Rite. Number one, holiness is manifested in the submission. Number two, holiness is manifested in the supplication. Number three, holiness is unfolded in the service. Number four, holiness is unleashed in the sanctuary. Number five, and finally, holiness is mentioned in the sacrifice unto the Lord. So many things, we think that these are only activities, but the Bible speaks otherwise. May the Lord enable us to initiate a new beginning in our lives, so as to live a holy life pleasing unto him. We haven't done this until now to the extent we need to do. It doesn't mean that we should get disgraced and refrain the place where we are. We can march on because we are marshaled by the Holy Spirit to march on to the heavenly destination. This can only be possible by the power of the blood of Jesus Christ and the cross of Jesus Christ. So let us come to the cross of Jesus Christ, washed by his precious blood. All our faults, failures, backslighting, pitfalls, flaws, maybe cleansed, washed and we have made a brand new person to take up these challenges and live a Christ-centered life. May the Lord enable us to do so, shall we pray?
Praise the Lord. Before we now close or come to a conclusion of the session, I would request Brother Ashil to pray for the word that's been brought unto us, so that the word may remain in our hearts.
Amen, amen.
Now there's few announcements. Tomorrow is a Sunday, the resurrection day, so we will have worship service here in the same sanctuary. And again, Brother Jayraj, Jayrajanna will bring the word of God, so if anybody wants to attend, please come. And this is an open invitation for all of you. Please come prayerfully so that we can rejoice in the presence of the Lord. And we really are thankful, you know, as Betel Prayer House, to the Lord especially because these meetings, you know, there's only one intention that we wanted to have these meetings. For about many years we didn't have, you know, meetings and COVID came and so many things came up, so we couldn't have the meetings. We were all praying as a church and then, you know, God opened us, opened us this particular opportunity. And it's a great privilege and an honor also to have Jayraj Anna in our midst today. You know, after many years, we are refreshed by the word. I am indeed refreshed, you know, by the word. But still there are, you know, tomorrow also Anna will be speaking on the same and, you know, we will be really refreshed. Hope everybody are refreshed today, because we understood the holiness, you know, and especially in the life of Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you all for, you know, who have attended and especially thank you all also for watching online. And I was just asking, is there anybody present and viewing the, you know, things? So many people are watching also online, so we thank you all. So before we close, I will, you know, the brothers will come and sing a closing song, closing song. And after that, you know, Anna will pray and then he'll give a benediction, then we will close. कन्नूल नेती पायरुल चूड़ू कन्नूल नेती पायरुल चूड़ू कोया गलेर वरू कन्नूल नेती पायरुल चूड़ू कोया गलेर वरू ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा कन्ने टितू विराजी नजो कोयुदु भूह आश्वतो कर्मि टितू वितिनाजो कोयुदु भूह आश्वतो आत्मियामि जयमुतो कोनसागवानि प्रभुतो आत्मियामि जयमुतो कोनसागवानि प्रभुतो ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ईशुप्रभण्न लत्कनवा ईशुप्रभण्न लत्कनवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा चनमुलो प्रभु महिगनिंदा साहिदवा फलमुंदा चनमुलो प्रभु महिगनिंदा साहिदवा फलमुंदा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा मंदिरु पड़ीरुंदा नंदुड़वे निमोंडी मंदिरु पड़ीरुंदा नंदुड़वे निमोंडी सारम्बी ग्रुहबुलो संतोषा समयमिदा सारम्बी ग्रुहबुलो संतोषा समयमिदा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा महिमा आर्वात्मुतु प्रीस्त्रासु वेंसया महिमा आर्वात्मुतु प्रीस्त्रासु वेंसया नम्मकमैला दासनिगा एदर्पंदुवू हल्लेलुया नम्मकमैला दासनिगा एदर्पंदुवू हल्लेलुया ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा कन्नूल नेती पायरुल चूड़ू कोया गलेर वरू कन्नूल नेती पायरुल चूड़ू कोया गलेर वरू ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा ओ संगमा परिशुद्ध संगमा तिन्हु चूत्रागुच्छु सुकिंतुवा Thank you brothers. I would request Anna to come, pray and give the benediction. And before that, just wanted to invite everybody. There we have arranged for a dinner, so please do not go back without having dinner. Anna.
प्रेम गलत तन्हृ, एसु नाधुनि नाममना ईरात्रि मर्लामी सिन्दिलो कन्पड़ाव काश्मण ग्रहिच्छनंद कुस्तोत्रालो जीवतम्ले इन्तो डस्सीपै सोलिपै क्रिङ्गिपै वच्छना शेष्या मानवालिनी प्रेमिंचि सिलवलो मार्निंचि समाच्छे बड़ितिरिगि मुड़ोदिनान् लेच्छनारो पर्लोकस्तलम्लो आसिनड़युन्नारमि कुस्तोत्रालो अमि सिलवयागमद्वारा अमरक्षणपन्दालनि मेरिच्छेंछनंद कुस्तोत्रालो आरक्षणा देवनि संकल्पमणि गुर्तिंछि विदेयतिचुपिंछि रक्षणास्वीकरिंछनुवानि बट्टिस्तुतिस्तना गादायविकमैनमाटल विनिकुड़ा रक्षणपन्दकुंदा वायदा वेस्तु हुदेनि कट्टनंजेस्कुनि परवालेलेलैन्कुनि तमन्तम सर्दिपुच्सुकुनि जीविस्तनवानि मेर्द्रुस्तुंछन्दि अदिकमैन आलेस्सिंग कलगकुमुनपे अदिकमैन नस्तम वारिक दापरिंछकुमुनपे देवनु ग्रतनंडवार तपिंस्वन्नाट्ल कापड़वन्नाट्ल सहायमिंछे मनि प्रार्थिस्तना योर रक्षणपुण्यनारो अर्मे द्रुस्तुंछि बलपरिच्छि उद्दरिंछि दहरिपरिच्छि आदरिंछि ल्यावनेत्ति नडिपिंस्मणि प्रार्थिस्तना ई पर्षदतन सन्मानिंछुकुंदा उन्नकानंछे तकारिगनु पद्रमु नस्तम विप्रीतम मोशिलांडु वाडिकालांटि पर्षित दापरिस्ते मालांडु वाळिंता नो सार्लमि पर्षदतन सन्मानिंछ्तनिकी बदलगा नस्तपर्चिनाम तन्हृ नान्नक्षमिंछुमु देवा मामन्नक्षमिंछुमु मे प्रदलकास्रिवादमगुण्डटानिक बदलगा शापमनाकु हेतुवायम कानमायम लीडरशिपलो उन्तु अद्यात्मिकमैना विजया फरम्परकोनसागिंछुकरिके विदेयतम मोलमणि अरगकुंदा जिविंछ करणिंछन्द तन्हृ ईशयावले देवनि मंद्रावणमलो मा प्रभु यकसिम हासनान्नि थ्रोम ट्वेन, चेम्पो, टांग्स यदि दायविकमैनमैं चूछुनाट्लगा सहायिंछि शादकरमैन ननेक सार्लो ई चुडल चुडूटलेदु यदि अनावसरमो दानिजुस्नस्तपयम मंद्रुक दौरमायम सहवासनिक दौरमायम देवसानिज्यदन आपेक्षिंछकुंदा दौरमायम इरवय एडो किर्तनलो किर्तनकाढन नडापत्कालमन्नन्नि पर्नशालो दाचु आ पर्नशालो दिक्कुनकु मैं चुडलैकुनपयम मा पर्नशालाईनि एसु, मा देवालाईमैनि एसु ममनि करणिंछि सहायमिंछि मनि प्रार्थिस्तनाम पर्षदात्मन मोसपुच्सका दुक्कपरसका कस्तपेटका आर्पिवेका आ पर्षदात्मदेवनिक माहुदेमलो जीतमलो चूटिचाईन द्वार नडिपिंस्वन्नाट्ल सहायिंछि रोमयनि 14 यंदर देवनात्मद्वार नडिपिंस्वर्तर, अन्देवनिक कुमारलानार कनिकमै मुम्मियात्मद्वारा नैविगेट्सेवन्नाट्ल सहायिंछि यो वन्नि माकु सरिपो, इष्टमुनदु, मा स्वतंत्रैन द्याबदिस्तैंत अलस्ता अन्दिके वोडिपयम ईरात्रि मर्लासिलव दगरिकोस्तना सिलवरक्तम्चेत कडिक पर्षद पर्सेंड ममनि क्रिस्तु सम्पूर्नत्लोनिकी साटेन सम्पूर्नत्गरिगनुवारगा मैं मंद्रम रावलनि मी आश कनिका आ मार्गमुनमै मंदुपुच्सुकुनि कोणत् क्राइमिचेलिंछि कोणत् ओपिकतो सिलवनेत्तुकुनि मे वाइप चूछुमुंदक साहिपुटानिक सहायिंछि यदि माकु कस्तमु दौरलाभमु, मे सहाय माकौसरम मेरेमा माधुरि, मेरेमाकु मुंदगानच्छना विश्वासमुनक कर्तदानिकोनसागिंछुवाड़ मे प्रदलु अया पनलु बाद्यत्लोनार आउटानिक सहायिंछनर कोत्मन ऑनलाइनलोकु चाईन ईनार मानो हद्दुबाटल्तो, पर्मितल्तो चब्बन माटलु कारेसिदिकलिंछि अलाग मेराकड़कोरुक मैं सिद्धपर्स्वर्तु 33, 40, 100 गा फलिंछनाट्लगा सहायिंछि मे प्रदलन मी दिवेल्लतो पंपिंछि संतोषम्तो वार बाइलवेडनट्ल सहायिंछे दुक्कम निट्टर्पेगिरिबूनट्ल चेंड, वार तलल मेजन नित्यानंदमुंसन्दि वार कललकनिन वारवल्युंसन्दि एड़ा उल्लसिंछ कस्तूर पुष्पुपुनट्ल चेंड, एड़ा अल्लो सिलौइल प्रयंपच्छे वार अंगलार्पु नाट्यमुकमात्संड वारी भावव्यादन निवाणा सेमनि प्रार्थिस्तना कललकनिन वारवल्यमे प्रदलु उन्नाट्लगाच्छे, मी दुक्करमुल समाप्तमगनानमे वाक्यमु नर्वेट्स्मणि प्रार्थिस्तना, बाइबिलरायबर्दु वार वल्लचुंडगा शुद्धलायरी कनिकमै प्रदल बाइलदेर वेल्टुंडगा अद्यात्मिकमैन शुद्धि अनुभविंछुनाट्लगा सहायिंछि तिरिग्रे प्रभु दिनमुकरुकु योर एक अकड़ा टिन्नावतनारो वारिकौसरमन सहाय मेरदाइचे मनि प्रार्थिस्तना ईराकड़ाले समेते मैं भूमि जसज्जलुंटमर्ला कल्सुकोटानिक सहायिंछि बेतिल प्रार्धनमंद्रान्नि प्रायस्पर्तनवार्नि देवनि प्रदलन करणिंछि सिट्टपकल स्तलालिंडोच्छु वार अंधनम बट्टिस्तोत्रालो मेरंद्रिक प्रभु, अंदर निर्गिनवाड़ अंदरिकोरुकु प्राणम्बेट्नर, अंदन्नि प्रेमिस्तनार अंदरिका स्रिवादमयलन संकल्पिंछनार अन्दिके वोकर कालेगिलिकुणनाट्लो, दुक्कमुकम्तो बाइटिकेलिकुणनाट्लो मे दिवेल्लतोवान्नि पंपिंछि, इसरायलिलुक मुंदनच्छना दायवमा मे प्रदलकुड़ा मुंदनडोमु, पगर मेगस्तममु रात्र अग्निस्तममु गुणिनाडिपिंछि माकु कादियहो, माकु कादु नी कृपा सच्चन बट्टमीनावुनिके महिमित्यच्छु एसु नाधुनि नाममना स्तुतिंछि प्रार्थिस्तना मतन्हृ Amen. मनलो कारेसादकमगतन शक्तिचोपना मनमर्गुवाटनिट्कंटिनु हिंसुवाटनिट्कंटिनु जलिकमगाच्छे शक्तिगला देवनिकी क्रिस एसु द्वारा संघमलो तरतरमलो महिमा कलगुनकाखा Amen.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord.